Can get started again. Okay, thank you. Thanks, everybody. Thank you, everybody, for being here this evening and for your cogent and pointed comments, and I appreciate you all trying to be as succinct as possible. Thank you. We are going to now come back to council, and we are going to start with Councilmember Perry. Councilmember Perry.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually only have a handful of questions, but then I have some extended remarks. And for staff, for the few questions that I have, I don't want you to provide me with answers to questions that you may feel that I want to hear. I want you to provide answers based on your professional training, experience, and expertise. In other words, I want you to be open, honest, and forthright. Can you kind of summarize again and kind of hit on the importance of 2026 and 2029 as it relates to the RTRP?
Absolutely. Daniel Honeyfield, Assistant General Manager, Energy Delivery. So I think you're referring back to one of the previous slides.
It's one of the first ones.
Yeah, not on the screen. So 2026, that has to do with the different weather conditions that we talked about earlier, the 1 in 10, the 1 in 5, 1 in 20. Right. So this table really describes that. So if we look at a 1 in 20 scenario where we reach 660 megawatts this summer, and we have an N minus 1 condition where we lose two generation units due to a loss of one of the subtransmission lines along Harupa Avenue coming out of Rurk, and that would take out two of our generation units. Therefore, we would be, we would be in the red condition there, where we would be beneath that, and we'd be forced to do rolling blackouts. Now, again, that's a 1 in 20 scenario, right? So there's a 5% chance of that occurring. Now, in 2029, you can see the 1 in 2, the 1 in 5, the 1 in 10, and the 1 in 20 all intersect at that N minus 1 condition. What this slide doesn't include is the loss of a transformer at Vista, because obviously we've surpassed that capacity for the last 22 years.
Sure. I was going to ask what would be required for our new reliability project, but I think that's been covered. Ken, can somebody from staff talk? Without RTRP, how are approved and future development projects going to be impacted?
I'll ask Tracy Soto.
So without RTRP, we already rely on RTRP and the fact that it is an approved project in our environmental reviews when we do SEQA for a development project. So in other words, when a development project comes in and we evaluate the availability of electricity and the capacity on the system, we note in there that we have RTRP and it's an approved project, and it should be developed soon, so there is no required mitigation. What will happen if we do not have RTRP in a timely fashion, or if it's delayed, is we will need to start evaluating those projects against these peak loads and these emergency conditions and these, these N minus 1 conditions. That will cause us to require development mitigation so that those development projects, as they come on, are going to either, they need to mitigate the peak load, in other words, they're going to need to put in batteries or some other means of mitigating their load so that it doesn't impact other customers, because that's the project impacting another customer, or it will require mitigation on behalf of the city that the city will undertake and incur costs to start mitigating those peak loads.
And kind of a follow-up to that, how does that impact our general plan 2050 that we're starting to work on now?
So it affects it in two ways. One, we have already relied on the RTRP as part of the housing element approval. So we do have an existing EIR that has cleared certain projects that are in the housing element. Those projects may have to undertake some environmental review going forward, and as far as the general plan goes, that will impact, we will have to evaluate the electricity capacity for all growth and development, and that, again, would require mitigation. And when there is mitigation in an EIR, that becomes a little bit more mandatory on the city to undertake those actions and binding so that we would need to take action in order to approve future development that could occur under that, under that plan. They would have to undergo those measures. And again, it might be battery storage, it might be something that RPU does, or it might be something that the development has to incur as a cost.
Sure. And this next question, not speaking from a monetary value, but what is the value of the project?
The value of a...
Of the RTRP.
So monetarily?
Non-monetarily.
Not...
Scratch that. That's okay.
I'm sorry. I'm just not quite understanding it.
No, that's okay. It's probably a bad question. But a question that's asked and probably deserves to be asked is, Herpa Valley got their lines undergrounded. How come, how come Riverside can't?
Thank you, Councilmember Perry. Scott Lesch, AG Empire Resources. Harupa Valley was seen as not directly benefiting from the line. The line was going through their area. It was benefiting Riverside. So the CPUC traditionally, when they look at these types of projects, will try as, as much as the mitigation allows to help mitigate communities that they feel are burdened by a transmission line going through their territory that they don't benefit from.
Sure. And can you maybe expand on a little bit more the role and issues we're having with both the Rurk and the Springs facilities?
Well, the Springs units are, are basically almost at end of life. They no longer, there's no longer any company that's manufacturing parts for them. So if we have to replace parts in the units, we have to go out and get them custom made. And in our integrated resource plan this time around, we, we considered, we're basically planning on retiring them in 2028 to 2030 and replacing it with some battery energy storage. The Rurk units are in midlife condition right now, and we intend to continue trying to run them through 2039. And they've been well-maintained, but like, you know, any equipment can trip on you or go offline. Things happen. So. And we have had damage to, to Rurk units over the last four years where we had to have turbines pulled out. I'm sorry, I went offline there. We have had two instances in the last four years where Rurk units have been damaged. They had to be taken out and shipped to Canada and repaired, and that took a number of months.
And the cost of those repairs?
Approximately $2 to $3 million in each incident.
There's been a comment, a couple of comments made about time is of the essence. Have we reached the time? Time is of the essence? Are we approaching it? Have we passed it for this project?
Time is definitely of the essence, and I mean, the table on the screen really describes that. And when we talk about the N minus 1 situation, that's, that's what we're concerned about. That's when we talk about reliability. It's been prudent practice, as I discussed earlier, to ensure that our system meets any N minus 1 condition. Our existing substations within the City of Riverside, our existing distribution system within the City of Riverside is, does have backups, is reliable. We loop our systems. In the loss of a transformer outside of a home, we can quickly restore power. At all of our substations, we have redundancy, we have the ability to transfer load. Someone described earlier about the transferring of load during summer conditions. We do that regularly because we can, because we have those distribution systems in place, and we've built and designed it to withstand N minus 1 conditions within our own service territory.
All right. I was going to make a couple of comments regarding the ruling of the recent, the recent Public Utility Commission hearing, but I think we have a video that I would like to play. I think this way people can actually watch, listen, and make their own conclusions. So if we have that video in the back, I think it's about seven minutes long.
I wanted to address the proposed decision we just approved regarding City of Norco's petition for modification of the decision we issued in 2020 granting Southern California Edison a certificate of public convenience and necessity for the Riverside Transmission Reliability Project or RTRP. At our recent voting meetings and in the preceding docket and again this mor, during this meeting, we've received numerous comments from residents in the region where the RTRP will be constructed and operated, as well as comments from elected officials who represent the region. Many, though not all, commenters have expressed in their comments concern about wildfire risk associated with the project's overhead transmission lines. And of course, we take those comments seriously, and we take our role in addressing the risk of utility-involved wildfires, wildfires seriously. And that's why I wanted to just take a few moments and talk about how we addressed this petition. First of all, this is a petition for modification, and I wanted to speak to the standard for petitions for modification and how it was applied in this case. And, and I particularly wanted to do that because we did receive some comments that suggested that the petition, in the view of the commenters, may not have received due consideration because it was filed several years after the deadline for seeking reconsideration of project approval. Under the commission's rules of practice and procedure, if a petition like the one submitted by Norco is submitted more than one year after the effective date of the decision proposed to be modified, the petition has to justify the late submission. In this case, the decision finds that Norco did not meet its burden because the concerns Norco raises in the petition were fully evaluated by the commission in the underlying proceeding, including in its environmental assessment of the danger of fires caused by or in proximity to the project's overhead transmission lines. Those concerns were also considered by the City of Riverside when it approved its portion of the RTRP and certified an environmental impact report for the entire project that includes Riverside's and Southern California Edison's portions of the RTRP. All of this is further explained in the revised proposed decision we approved today. I'd like to just touch on some of those points, but first, I wanted to say a few words about the purpose of the project. The purpose of the RTRP is to provide the City of Riverside and its customers with adequate transmission capacity to serve existing and projected load and to provide for long-term system capacity for load growth and provide needed system reliability. According to the California Independent System Operator's comments and testimony in the proceeding, the CAISO's Board of Governors approved the Riverside Transmission Project as a necessary addition to the CAISO-controlled grid to meet the needs of the City of Riverside and directed Southern California Edison to construct the project. CAISO, in its determination, found that the project's needed to reliably serve load in the City of Riverside going forward and that the existing Vista substation is inadequate to serve the City of Riverside's increased load and the expansion of that substation isn't feasible. And we did hear some comments today and in the record about the purpose and need of the project. In terms of the, of the decision, the decision identifies and points out mitigations and also the regulatory framework supporting the determination that the project poses a less-than-significant risk of wildfire. The decision explains that Riverside's environmental impact report recognized that the RTRP would cross abundant vegetation that may pose conditions conducive to wildfires near the banks of the Santa Ana River. The EIR also noted that fires could occur if trimla, if tree limbs or structures were to interface with a live phase conductor. But the EIR determined that vegetation management in conformance with the commission's General Order 95 and Public Resources Code, Section 4293, would reduce the likelihood of vegetation interfacing with the RTRP. It explains that the Riverside EIR adopted mitigation measure hazard 03, which requires development and enforcement of a fire management plan specific to the RTRP, and that with implementation of this mitigation measure would reduce potential fire impacts to less-than-significant levels. The proposed decision discusses that the commission's SEIR provided additional analysis of RTRP's potential fire risk. Among other things, it recognized that transmission lines are designed to withstand high winds, are spaced safely, they contain shut-off protection systems to cut off power flow in a fraction of a second, and pointed to the regular maintenance inspections which would identify corrosion, equipment misalignment, loose fittings, or other mechanical problems, and reduce the risk of downed structures. Furthermore, the decision explains that since certification of the SEIR and issuance of the CPCN, or the Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity, the commission, in coordination with the Office of Energy Infrastructure Safety, continues to assess and monitor whether utilities like Southern California Edison are properly directing resources and taking appropriate measures to address and mitigate wildfire risks. And as one example, the commission coordinates with OEIS to further the wildfire mitigation mandates in state law, including those requiring utilities to prepare and comply with wildfire mitigation plans. And those plans also must provide extensive mitigation, including but not limited to descriptions of preventative strategies and programs, electrical cooperation protocols for de-energizing portions of the distribution, of the electrical distribution system, and consider associated impacts on public safety, plans for vegetation management, and more. And so the other point being that the environmental review that the commission has already carried out and relied on, the environmental review carried out by the City of Riverside, looked at these issues and, and the decision before us, that came before us today, called that out with more specificity. And I think, I just, I appreciate the time to go through this because I know that a lot of public commenters who called in with concerns may, may benefit from hearing from us directly about the level of review that we did and the level of review that was done in the environmental analyses for these projects. I wanted to acknowledge the comments received on Norco's petition and the proposed decision, and I appreciate the opportunity to just speak to the importance that the commission places in its role in addressing and evaluating the risk of utility-involved wildfires. And I think that's all I wanted to say, but I appreciate the time.
All right. Thank you. I have some remarks to make. Some of it's a little bit redundant, but I, I think it's, it's important for me to put it on, on the record. This has been a long and emotionally charged process. I believe we reached the point where a decision must be made by the city council. I think it's time to continue with this approved project or start over with a new one. I believe staff would appreciate the direction from this council. We need to consider how this project ultimately affects our neighborhoods and how it impacts the entire city of Riverside. We also need to take into consideration that we are the largest city in the county and the county seat. We are the only city of our size in the entire state who does not have a second connection to a regional electric grid. We are responsible for providing safe and reliable utility service to all of our ratepayers. They consist of residents, businesses large and small, multiple government entities, multiple emergency operation centers, three hospitals, multiple care facilities, and learning institutions, just to name a few. Of the three hospitals, one is currently expanding their campus, and one is planning for a future expansion. All of them and more depend on us to provide safe and reliable services. Almost everything we do requires the use of electricity. The city must be prepared for a catastrophic event such as an earthquake. It's not a question of if, it's a question of when we will, when, when one will strike. We live in earthquake country, and we must keep in mind one of our electric transfer stations is literally located on an active earthquake fault. In addition, we have aging infrastructure such as electric substations. Recently, we approved funding to replace the Hunter Park Substation, and we have others in desperate need of the same action, along with a long list of other infrastructure needs. The staff report describes and goes into great detail regarding the infrastructure issues. I also have concerns for the safety of our employees who must work on this aging equipment. In making this decision, we must learn from others who only have one connection to an electric grid. The one that comes to mind, and I've mentioned it in the past, is a few years ago in the state of Texas. Their utility went down in the winter with no backup service. Part of Texas went at least a few days without electricity. This is unacceptable and cannot happen here. Almost half of my constituents consist of low-income families and senior citizens who live in mobile home parks. No one, especially our senior population, should ever be exposed to that possibility. During the summer, mobile homes turn into ovens; in the winter, they become freezers. I work with low-income and senior communities on a regular basis, and I know their struggles. During this process, I have voted and supported to extend additional time to review alternative options. Early in 2023, the prior city council agreed to participate with two colleagues representing us in a working group with other elected officials. The primary purpose and objective was to identify and secure potential funding to underground the RTRP power lines. Prior to 2023, there was an RFP process to study this project. It was made very clear from the very beginning this would be a final and last opportunity to resolve this issue. We were told if the funding wasn't located, it would be time to move on. We were asked to provide this working group with time until the end of September 2023, followed up with a final report in October of that same year. During this conversation, the prior city council agreed with my recommendation for our colleagues to provide an update on their progress in either May or June of 2023. No update was provided in the month of May. During the first part of June 2023, a prior colleague brought forward a proposal seeking a discussion as to whether or not to proceed with the working group consisting of elected officials or their representatives. During this meeting, I proposed allowing this working group to continue through September and for the city council to receive monthly updates until that time. Councilmember Hemingway requested an opportunity to skip the month of July. July was excluded, and the city council voted unanimously to continue with the working group until September, with monthly updates in August and September. The June update took place at the end of the month. Once again, in an essence, we were told, this was the last effort to obtain funding for this project with a September-October deadline. The city council started its summer schedule and met on August 1st and August 15th, 2023. No update was agendized or provided at either meeting. The very next day, on August 16th, at least one council member apparently attended a community meeting and appears to have provided an official update on this process. On the following day, which was August 17th, my office started to receive emails informing me they attended that community meeting and heard about the federal funding for this project. They requested my support to allow additional time for this funding request to go through the next federal budget process. This was the very first time I heard about federal funding or the federal budget process through a constituent's email. The next council update was provided in the first part of September 2023. This is when the entire council heard about this potential funding mechanism as it was connected to U.S. Senator Padilla. We were told this type of funding could be used for projects such as this one. We were told due to the summer schedule and having to work within the Sunshine Ordinance, in essence, prevented the August update. This potential funding was identified as the bipartisan infrastructure law and the Inflation Reduction Act. During this meeting, I made a request to have a representative from Senator Padilla's office attend our October meeting. This would provide firsthand knowledge and an opportunity to know what this funding would and would not cover. A representative from the senator's office did not attend the September or October meeting. The last time this project was discussed by the city council was on October 24th, 2023. At that meeting, the council voted 4 to 3 to send a letter to the CPUC. Since that time and for the, for the past seven months, there has been no updates, discussions, recommendations, or decisions. Earlier in this process, I made a suggestion to the working group to look into CPUC Rule 20A. It's my understanding this provision at one time provided $1 billion in funding for undergrounding of power lines. To this day, there's been no feedback to the suggestion. No actual funding has been identified, obtained, or secured with the only hope of obtaining potential funding from the federal budget process. This funding is also available to all government entities, including tribal territories across this nation. Even if funding was obtained, the ability to underground the RTRP would still require approval by the CPUC. There's been no discussion or information on any potential rate increase to underground this project. In November of 2023, the CPUC was going to decide on a matter involving PG&E on the cost of undergrounding and the potential cost to the ratepayer. If there is any potential cost to our ratepayers, I have not seen it or any supporting cost analysis or studies. I cannot and will not expose my constituents to any additional increase in their utility rates. I have heard from a number of them, and they're not happy with our most recent approval of the new trash, water, and electric rates. They have been loud, and they have been clear. If that isn't enough, this year we will discuss potential new sewer rates, and voters will have to decide on an RCTC ballot initiative to increase our sales tax. As I stated earlier, I represent a large senior community, and many of them are barely surviving on social security. Many of them are not happy with our decision to increase our utility rates. Some of them have endured an increase in their rent and Medicare, and for some, they literally do not know how they are going to make it. I cannot take any chance and expose them to any further increases. This was the primary reason why I opposed the increase in our water and electric rates. We all agree a second connection to the grid, there is a need for a second connection to the grid, and there's some disagreement in how we get there. I'm not sure we can wait any longer. Regardless of what, what we do, we face mandates and challenges to provide safe and reliable service. Just a few examples. We are a city of over 320,000, and we are mandated to provide approximately 20,000 new housing units within the next couple of years. I did not support the housing element. New housing may require all, an all-electric utility with no natural gas service or connection as natural gas phases out. Both the state and federal governments have mandates, including vehicles. The previous council made it easier to approve and construct accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. I oppose this proposal. The prior city council passed and implemented a new electrification ordinance. I did not support that proposal. At some point in the future, we may have another discussion on inclusionary housing. All of this will bring additional high-density multi-housing. I did not support the elimination of our crime-free multi-housing program. We continue to seek and recruit business to our city. Despite our recent increase in utility rates, we continue to provide very competitive rates. The working group has sought funding while at the same time we still do not have a definitive total cost for undergrounding. How do we request funding when we do not have a total price tag? If we, if we base it on other undergrounding projects in other cities, I have not seen any type of project and/or site comparison studies or analysis. This would include an evaluation or recommendation from a geoengineer. The next question is, can we really rely on Washington to provide potential funding for an underground project? It appears the city sought some funding for the RTRP from Congress in either the '23 or '24 appropriation process and was not successful. In fiscal year 2023, Representative Mike Levin requested $1.5 million for the Stonehill Drive Utility Undergrounding Project located in Dana Point. The project received $750,000 in funding. I really don't know if we can depend on Congress. For example, take a look at the past six or seven months. There's been the chaotic debacle involving the speaker, speaker and the adversity and dysfunction on the budget process just to keep the government open and running. I do not have a great deal of confidence in this process. All along, there has been a discussion for the CPUC to take a second look at this project through a petition for modification or a PFM. This has been completed, and they have issued their decision in March. Leading up to their decision, there was an opportunity for the community to weigh in via email and public comment at multiple meetings. There were organized efforts for the community to participate in this process. The PFM submitted by Norco was placed on the CPUC agenda as a consent item. When they denied this request, the CPUC members could have simply voted to deny it with no explanation. For the second time, the CPUC made it very clear they will not support undergrounding of this project. They could have denied the PFM based solely on it being filed outside of the one-year statute. They could have denied it based on the administrative law judge declaring Norco has no standing on this project, but they didn't, but they didn't in either scenario. but they didn't, but they didn't in either scenario. Instead, you just heard the lengthy statement which was provided by CPUC Commissioner Douglas based on the completed EIR. Much of what was said pretty much followed the direction advised verbatim we've received from our own CPUC attorney. One of our local legislators recently introduced proposed legislation regarding the EIR process and it appears to be unsuccessful. At the same time, we have an existing project which is fully approved by all regulatory agencies, funded and ready to go. None of this is easy and I do not take any of it lightly. And ideally, I wish we could underline all power lines. I do support our RPU team who are the subject matter experts and who have prepared and provided the necessary supporting staff report and attachments which have been approved by our city manager. All of these documents are readily, readily available to the public and anyone wishing to review them. They are part of the public record. Based on the totality and what is best for the entire city, this time to move on with this project. Even in the best scenario, it's going to take a few years to complete. Waiting any longer potentially jeopardizes the city, its future, all of its rate payers and residents. With that, I will move to approve staff's recommendation. And my last, my last comment is there is one street that I think is highly impacted by multiple lines going everywhere and I think it's Bradford Street and Ward Seven. That really needs to be reviewed and evaluated as we move forward. So that is, that is my statement and that is my motion. Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, we have a motion to approve staff's recommendation. Councilmember Hemingway.
Seeing no one jump in, I'll, I'll jump in since the slide is up. I I don't want to devolve into debate here on all the comments, all the information. And what's happened up to this point, I think there's a lot of it that's incorrect that's been stated. I think there's a lot that is misinformation out there. And in fairness, I'm probably on both sides. What I do know is that there is a possibility to do this better. And perhaps the simple reason that we aren't in a different place is because no one ever tried. And that's not going to be me. Because I don't believe that it's not possible to do this project better. I do believe that there's a very simple reason of why it's proceeded thus far. And I think we can, we, we owe it to not only Ward Seven residents but Riverside residents to do better. Let me just talk about the slide that's up. Because while this looks like the only slide projecting when we reach certain problem scenarios. In fact, this, correct me if I'm wrong, this is actually a slide that forecasts, predicts, forecasts addition, with additional growth and significant new growth. The irony is, if you go one page earlier in the report, there's actually a slide or, or a graph that shows what has actually happened over average of the last few, few years. And the irony with that report is that in fact, even the one in ten scenario doesn't happen until twenty twenty-eight, the one in five scenario doesn't happen until twenty thirty-two, and the one in two scenario doesn't happen until twenty thirty-eight. And just to be clear about those scenarios, those scenarios are peak moments in a few, not even a few, one to two months out of the year on some days, not every day, and that's with only two generation systems running that we would, we would exceed. Not the four where we're at capacity of, we should have the capacity of over seven hundred and fifty megawatts. That's at the capacity of six hundred and fifty megawatts. So I just want to frame that because if we look back from two thousand and three, there's in fact only been three to four times when we've actually exceeded the, the capacity through the Vista Substation with one unit running to support extra. So I just want, when we think of the henny penny, the sky is falling. I just want us to be fair with the conversation and I think we owe it to folks to be fair with the conversation. Because at our maximum capacity, which I know we want to be conservative in our, our approach so that we're not caught in a precarious place. In fact, we won't hit those maximum capacities till well past twenty forty, twenty forty-five. So to say there's not time i- is a little unfair. Not to mention, we've been hearing this sense of urgency for the last twenty years. Now, some could say, well, that's why it's even more urgent today. And yet, the graphs and the reports show different. I do think it's important that we move forward with something. I do think it's important that we get a second connection to the grid. But what I don't think is appropriate is when I hear, well, it's for the greater good, but it's going to disproportionately impact Ward Seven. And even if someone said it's for the greater good and Ward Seven residents will bear the disproportionate brunt of this. I, I would have a conversation, but it's not because it's for the greater good per se, it's because it's for a greater profit. And I will, I will not let profit override what's best for residents, even if it's maintaining an unadulterated space of open space. Even if it's to maintain the home values of those that are, and, and there's misinformation even there that somehow that's a really wealthy area. It is not. That we already know it's been denigrating the, the, the home value in anticipation of what's going to go in. And then finally, even if there's a half a percent chance of a fire, that's a half a percent chance that we don't have to have if we would just build it the right way. If we would just spend the extra, which we do actually have numbers and we gave numbers. It's between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and fifty million potentially. But part of the reason we don't know is because those that are supposed to be building it as partners aren't providing that information. And so, you know, I, I think, and, and then this is the most disturbing thing and, and, and when we get a letter, because for so long I've been told that this project was out of our control at this point. It was not Riverside's project, it was actually Edison's project. The moment that the CPCN went through, it's, it was signed, sealed, and delivered. It's over. And then we get a request to move forward with something we never paused. That's the first thing. We, we never paused this project. Matter of fact, in the timeline, it actually says Edison paused the project for, for two years because of concern for rate payers. So I'm assuming, and what I've heard is now not twenty twenty-six will it be done, twenty twenty-eight potentially. And, and by the way, I'm curious, did you pause the collection for the percentage of the CIP, the, the capital improvement project, the plan that included this project that was supposed to be done by twenty twenty-six? Did you pause collecting those rates? Are you going to pause in twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty-eight? Or are we anticipating increased costs? And, and it concerns me because I don't know if you paused because inflation was really high then and it's more cost-effective to do it later. I don't know, I'm speculating now, but it does concern me. But it concerns me also that we're being asked to reinstate without delay, something we didn't delay, we didn't pause on. We, matter of fact, I made it clear as we were doing this that we would do this, you can proceed, we are going to do our own exploration. So I'm a little confused on whose project it is. Why we're being asked to, to, in a, in a fairly demanding letter to, to concede in these ways? That, that concerns me.